Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, February 3rd, 2025. I'd ask that you all please rise for brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we just ask for understanding and blessings on our city council and our community as we go about the items of business before us. We are ever mindful that there is a lot of debate and discussion on a variety of subjects going, taking place in the United States of America. And Batavia is just a small speck on the map, but we certainly appreciate, to this point in time at least, all the good direction and support we have received from both the federal and state governments over the last few years. And we would hope that however things have worked out, that some of that could continue to come with us. Tonight, we want to ask a special blessing from all those in our community who are serving in foreign soils in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that each one of the men and women involved in that situation are watched over closely. Also tonight, we just ask for guidance and understanding and appreciation of the goodness of the community as the members of the city council take actions of the items before us. And finally, we ask for a special blessing in any from our community or under sickness or affirmed in any way, and we just ask that a special blessing be shown upon them. We ask for all these blessings, amen. Who would like to do the Pledge of Allegiance? Alderman.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, Kirk, to call the roll.
Barazza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peifer.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Malay.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone. Vocal singer.
Here.
All 12 present, two absent.
So we have the necessary form to conduct business. Moving then to item number four. Remind everyone, if you're going to speak to us tonight, to please come up and use the podium, and the mic will be on so you can be heard. All of our meetings are televised on BATV, and so we want to make sure that what you're saying at the meeting will be heard. That's why we have the microphone there for you to speak into as you're addressing the city council. Do we have any items to be removed, editor, changed on tonight's agenda from the city council?
I do, Your Honor. We're going to remove item L from the consent agenda and discuss it at a later date.
You didn't speak well, I didn't hear you real well.
We're going to remove item L from the consent agenda and table it until at a later date.
Item L, okay. All right, anything else? Do we need a motion to agenda? You need to move to agenda?
I move we remove item L from the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in second to move item L from the consent to the approval of regular agenda. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Beck.
Aye.
Peifer.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
12 yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved. Any further comments on the consent agenda? Do we want a motion? No, okay. All right, moving then to item number seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda.
I didn't read the full agenda yet, consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Moving then to approval of the consent agenda.
You have to read the consent.
Alderman Beck, you want to read it, please?
Yes, Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. Accept and place on file the Committee of the Whole minutes for January 14th, 2025, and the Plan Commission minutes for December 18th, 2024. And for approval, the January 17th, 2025 payroll in the amount of $1,099,765.13, and January 31st, 2025 payroll in the amount of $1,170,669.13. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $3,838,568.93. Resolution 2025-11-R, accepting a plot of dedication of part of South Van Buren Street. Resolution 2025-14-R, Esri Enterprise Agreement. Resolution 2025-16-R, IT Equipment Purchase. Resolution 2025-17-R, IT Equipment Maintenance Renewal. Resolution 2025-10-R, authorizing the execution of a one-year renewable contract for the 2025 through 2029 janitorial services for City of Batavia facilities with Vega Building and Maintenance Incorporated of Romeoville, Illinois. Resolution 2025-18-R, approving a consultant agreement with Trans Systems Corporation to perform Illinois Route 31, Batavia Avenue pedestrian safety improvements and sidewalk gap elimination Phase 1 preliminary engineering study for an amount not to exceed $77,051. And for approval, the Cow Executive Session Minutes for November 26th, 2024, setting the price of land for sale and personnel. December 12th, 2024, collective bargaining. And January 14th, 2025, litigation and workers' compensation. Approval of a class, oh, I'm sorry, that's the one we're skipping. Ordinance 2025-9, extension of a 180-day moratorium on the acceptance and processing of certain building and zoning applications for the LI Light Industrial and GI General Industrial properties in the South River Street Gateway Overlay District. Your Honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Motion in second for the approval of the consent agenda as read, any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Beck.
Aye.
Peifer.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
12 yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved. All right, moving then to seven matters from the public for items not on the agenda. I received an email today from Kristi Goodyear. Are you here? Would you come up, please, and tell us your address and your conversation? Right where you should be. Pull the mic down until we get you on TV there. Could you introduce yourself with your address and?
I'm Kristi Goodyear. I live at 327 Republic Road. I'm here today because of the planned sidewalk along Republic Road and Maple Lane. And as you recall, I've been here before regarding the same subject. And so I've been collecting signatures on a petition requesting the cancellation of the planned sidewalk along Republic Road and Maple Lane. My petition consists of three sections. The first section is for residents on Republic Road, Maple Lane, North Avenue, and Van Norwick Avenue where slated for sidewalk along our properties. The second section is for residents on Republic Road that's on the opposite side of the road where the sidewalk is planned to be placed. And the third section is for any residents, concerned residents of Batavia that are willing to support this cause. My petition requests the planned sidewalk along Republic Road and Maple Lane to be canceled based on the following reasons. Lack of need, locations with greater need could have and should have been identified, excessive cost to the taxpayers, potential damage and loss of our mature trees. Local certified arborists have advised that the planned sidewalk construction would pose significant health risk to our trees. I've spoken to three certified arborists who have all either treated our trees, worked on our trees, or have inspected our trees. And our tree is further from the planned sidewalk than many of the other trees. And yet, we have probably a 65-year-old ginormous locust, and the health of that tree is affected. Many of the other trees are over 50 years old, and they are going to be within six feet of the planned sidewalk, and the damage could be immense. Lack of clear, straight sidewalk path. Sidewalk has been designed to weave around existing trees, fire hydrants, utilities, et cetera. Placement location along many of the driveways will create a hardship for residents who regularly use their driveways to park vehicles. Sidewalk is planned very close to some homes and property features, especially where sidewalk is placed, several additional feet away from the curb to avoid, try to avoid the trees. Potential damage to aged sewers, water lines, driveways, et cetera, caused by the demolition and excavation required for the construction of the sidewalk. Loss of green space. The green space along Republic Road and Maple Lane provides a significant amount of curb appeal. This green space is important to us and, in many cases, a deciding factor in living here. Environmental concerns. Unnecessary replacement of driveway aprons. Reduction of green space and addition of concrete impervious area has significant environmental consequences. Republic Road is wide with low traffic. Many people who walk along Republic Road do so because they enjoy walking on it. When talking to several of these pedestrians, they do not see the need for a sidewalk. On nearby streets with sidewalks, many people still prefer to walk in the street in lieu of provided sidewalks. Many sidewalks in Batavia currently require repairs and/or they do not meet ADA accessible standards. The significant cost of adding sidewalk on Republic Road and Maple Lane adds to the short-term and long-term financial burden to the taxpayers and a slight to those currently living with deteriorated, uneven, and/or non-accessible sidewalk along their property. Only residents who live on Republic Road need to walk on Republic Road to get to the school or the park. Sidewalks running perpendicular to Republic Road provide access to that school and park. And first off, I would like to say that I cannot say enough about the residents of Batavia. Even though I showed up at their doors unannounced, many invited me in, listened to what I had to say, and thanked me for my dedication to this cause. Some days, I returned home with very few signatures, not because people refused to sign, but because everyone was so friendly and I spent a lot of time chatting with a lot of different people. So I took my petition. I introduced myself, where I lived. I asked them if they had a few moments to listen. Told them I had a petition for the City of Batavia. Asked them if they had a few moments to listen to what my petition was about and possibly sign it. Most people were more than willing to listen. I currently have received 117 signatures from 84 residences. I visited 22 residences that did not sign for various reasons. If at the time I only had the opportunity to speak with one resident, I didn't attempt to speak to another resident of the household. A majority of the residents most affected by the sidewalk on Republic and Maple have signed the petition. I also visited Blue Stem and Willow between Chilum and Lexington. They have been awarded a grant for the SRTS 2024 Selected Projects. I spoke to residents from 15 of the 30 residences affected by those new sidewalks. None of the residences were aware that they were to receive sidewalk along their street or property. I received signatures from 12 of 15 of those residences that I visited with them. I showed them a copy of the award listing and advised them where they could find it on the iDOT website. While they knew the petition was only for Republic and Maple, their support or lack thereof was largely based on their feelings towards a sidewalk along their street or property. I was able to reach a large number of residents on Carriage Drive between Shabon-Atrail and Maple Lane. Every resident that I spoke to was hugely supportive of my petition. Maple Lane was also very supportive, with only one resident that I reached not willing to sign. I do have a very thorough narrative outlining which residences I visited with maps indicating the support or lack thereof for my petition. And I'm not leaving my original petition this evening. I will deliver that officially, and I will be providing a copy to iDOT. I will continue to carry on with the petition if necessary, meaning I'll be visiting more residences. I have also, so I would bring with me a lot of data. I have the Safe Routes to School application. I have the drawings of the planned sidewalks. I also have spent countless hours on the City of Batavia website, reading agendas and minutes, watching videos from the Committee of the Whole and the council meetings. I have been reviewing and capturing data from the Batavia pedestrian and ped cyclist accidents, the 2012 through 2022 study that Batavia did. I've mapped that, I have mapped each one of those accidents out, and I've determined where they were in relation to where sidewalk is or isn't. I have also, I did a Freedom of Information request, to request the initial application that went, and also the parent surveys that this application was supposed to have been based on. I did enter all that data into a spreadsheet, and I've compiled all that data to show where people found the sidewalks important, or how many people found sidewalks important, et cetera. So I didn't come at this from, I just don't want sidewalk along my property. I came at it from, you know, several different aspects. By and large, the residents of Batavia that do not currently have sidewalk, they do not want sidewalk, they don't feel the need for sidewalk. Most people that are very familiar with Republic Road are like, why are they putting sidewalk on Republic Road? I've talked to many people that even going back to 30, 40 years, you know, remember walking down Republic Road and all the trees, and it would just be truly a shame if our trees were adversely affected. So I did also bring a copy of the book, The Giving Tree. I know the story isn't directly related, like directly, you know, the same story, but it talks about a tree that was basically cut down when, you know, after it had been grown for years and years, and that future generations could have enjoyed that tree, but now it's gone. So it always kind of brings a tear to my eye at the end of, at the end of this book. And it just, you know, just feel like it, in a way, kind of is related to this issue.
Need a motion, I think, to accept the petitions that she's presenting?
She's not presenting tonight. You don't need a motion, does it?
She can present it, you don't have to. You can take it, you don't need a motion. What about the documents? I would think it'd be good to put them in file. I don't know.
You don't need a motion.
Don't need a motion. Does anybody in the council have any comments that she wished to share with the speaker?
Yeah, I know you and I have spoken about this in the past. And I first want to say thank you for all the hard work you're doing. It takes a lot to knock on your neighbor's doors. It takes a lot to advocate for an issue. It takes a lot to, you know, come and speak to us and do all that. I think you probably know my position on there, on this, in this issue. Just today, it was today Monday, just yesterday, my son and I walked down Republic Avenue. And it's, as you know, I live just across the block from you. And it, from my perspective, just to let you know, it is a dangerous street for us. And I think the volume part of it is because there aren't sidewalks. For me personally, and my young children who do walk down Republic at least once a week in the summertime, it's, we would go down there much more often if there were sidewalks. That said, I think that you've done a good job with sort of presenting one, you know, your perspective on it. And the property owners certainly purchase those properties for a reason. There's, there haven't been sidewalks there for years. So, you know, I'm kind of trying to say that it's a legitimate concern. I do know, though, for kids, and for parents like myself who live in that neighborhood, I think that there is a need. And as a resident right there, that I would use that road more often if there were sidewalks. So it's, again, thank you so much for the hard work and everything you do. I just wanted to share that in my personal experience, which is not backed by the rigorous data and the methodology, that there is some lived experience there that makes that road hard, and it makes it difficult and dangerous. And, you know, is it a chicken and egg problem? I don't know. But for our family, it's something we think about often. But again, thank you very much.
Yeah, I guess some of the things that I think we have taken into consideration over the past 20 years that I, plus years that I've been here, when it comes to sidewalks, is trying to start at the schools and work our way out from there. And the basic idea was to have at least one side of the street have a sidewalk connected to another sidewalk that gets to the school, to keep kids out of the street. I test drive cars through there all day throughout the week at work, and I will tell you, I stay off of Van Norwick when they're dropping kids off and when they're picking kids up, because the majority of the people will sit out in the street, and then the kids have to walk on Republic, have to walk out around the car to get wherever they want to go, because they just don't cut through everybody's yard. I've watched this for years. I've waited for this piece of sidewalk to come up. I fought really hard in my ward to get sidewalks and to get kids to gustus, and so they didn't have to walk down streets and cut through yards. I don't want to wait till somebody gets hurt, and that's the reason why we use the safe roads to school or safe routes to school criteria to try to figure out how to get some money to help pay for that. Whatever infinite wisdom was in the city 40 years ago when they built that street and built all the houses, or 50 years ago, they decided not to have sidewalks. We have the same thing on the east side of town in certain neighborhoods. Some of the problems are when you have sidewalks on the other side of the streets or away from that street, people get used to walking down those to get there, and then they have to decide how do they get to the school from there. And basically, it's either go all the way around and get to Van Norwick, or walk down the street. I think it's really unsafe to, you know, force kids to do that. Kids should walk to school. They don't need to be driven every day year-round and have all that additional traffic around the schools. So I think it's really important that we've worked very hard to try to procure outside funding to do this, so it doesn't cost our residents as much. And these aren't just throwaway items that, you know, because we have the funding that we just decided to do. There was a lot of time and a lot of effort put in to get to this point over the last decade, and I give our staff a lot of credit for the amount of time that they put in to try to get those grants to get this stuff done. And it's not just about the people that are there. And yes, you're right, we go around trees, we go around whatever we need to, to try to be as harmless as we can be. I don't want to wait till a kid gets hurt, and I think that that section, especially with the traffic that's over there going to that school twice a day, needs to have sidewalks.
I will say that I've, so one resident, so I did have one resident that, on between, on the block between Illinois and North, he actually lived most of his life in that home. He was raised there. He purchased that home from his mom or his parents. He currently lives there with his little girl, who he is fully raising. He was happy to sign the petition. He did not understand a need for the sidewalk, and his concern was with the landscape and the trees. I received nine, yes, like nine, like nine residents, nine, people from nine residences between Maple Lane and Shabonah, where there's no planned sidewalk at the moment. They've signed it. I had two people that did not sign it. A lot of the people that did were more than willing to sign. They had small children. I even walked up to a house that had an HC Storm sign right in the yard, and they were more than willing to sign. So I do have the majority, even those with small children, are more than happy to sign. Yesterday, one of the signers said he, he was previously on the city council. He was previously a state representative. He's fully in support of my petition. And he, you know, he indicated that there's just, it's a really safe street. I mean, I live on that street, and I guess I don't see the traffic that those that don't live on my street see. I work from home sometimes, and anytime I hear something going on outside, I always take a look to see what's out there, what traffic is out there, and I really don't see much. Now, if you're referencing between McKee and Illinois, I can't speak too much to that, except for I usually leave for work about 8:00 in the morning. I usually, sometimes I come home for lunch, and I come home in the evenings. I never really see any traffic along there. I'm not, you know, I do see some traffic heading to the school, but, and there's times where I'm coming back at about 3:00, and I still, I don't really see much traffic. And it's such a wide street, and, you know, I've, you know, I've been out walking, I've been out every weekend for months now, walking along these streets, and I've only had to kind of step up on the curb a couple times. I've had, I had more cars pass me while I was walking on McKee for two blocks, where now the situation is going to be resolved, but that should have certainly been an area that received sidewalk many years ago if safety was the main concern. I had more cars pass me in that two-block time than I have on my street the entire time I've lived there.
Let me just say a couple things. Number one, I think the history here in the neighborhood is, is that roads like Republic Road, Maple Lane, North Avenue, North, or, you know, Van Norwick, Maple Lane, North Avenue, all kind of came about in Batavia's life after World War II. And I had it confessed to me, I will use the word, by former city officials, that they didn't take very good care of new development in those years. And they didn't require sidewalks, and they didn't require curb and gutter, and they didn't require street lights, and there was a bunch of stuff that got, did not get put in on those streets out there. And I think your situation is probably one of the results of that situation. A few years back, when some of this, this is not a new conversation here, this is, goes on depending on where it is in the town. And several times, it's come back, and after things are built or things are done, then other things are maybe changed or added to a situation. And one of the classic one was, is there was no sidewalk on North Avenue, from North Avenue and Jefferson Street going west out toward HC Storm School. And we had some people, I think some of them may be in the audience, that got really fired up about that and got the residents along the route, sign a petition that sidewalk should be put in. And there is a sidewalk that's kind of after the fact, it was put in on North Avenue from Jefferson out to basically Republic Road, I guess it was. So this is an ongoing conversation, and, you know, as times change and things change, it can come back up to the city council for future consideration. I don't know, I'm not detecting here right now that anybody is sitting here thinking that we need to make, they want to make a motion to change the sidewalk design. And we've just had one of the aldermen from the ward speak and give his viewpoint to it. I think you're all on the record now for what you've done. You've got those, can you leave us copies of those documents?
Yeah, I will leave what I have so far. As far as the signature goes, the narrative I was going to include with my, like, official submittal of the petition.
So we will leave it, I will, I'm not hearing a motions, anybody wanting to make a motion here, so we'll leave it with you leaving the documents, and that will kind of keep the file open for future conversations and study as this thing goes forward. So I don't think we want to change anything we're doing right now, but we'll see how things unfold in the days ahead.
And I will, I will email the data.
Yeah.
I have a very thorough spreadsheet with I have a very thorough spreadsheet with 119 of the surveys from H.C. Storm.
You've talked to me on the phone several times, so you know how to get a hold of me.
And I have, and I also have the data from the 2012 to 2022 pedestrian accidents. One of the accidents in particular is over, you know, on the west side. They put the the arrow right in the middle of a driveway on a cul-de-sac where there was a sidewalk.
So we will leave it at that and thank you for coming down and giving your presentation tonight.
Mayor? I just want to make sure that we don't set incorrect expectations here. Andrea, this contract will be let by the state of Illinois. Is that correct? So it is not a matter at this point that will come back to city council?
It has already been let by the state and we are just waiting for them to contact us to go ahead and move forward with awarding the contract. And I will say that we have used other type of funding like CDBG, the Community Block Grants on the east side here. And the engineering staff, as soon as that sidewalk had been, the ribbons taken off, people were utilizing it. So although I know people may not want it, I know it's necessary, it's safe to get the students where they need to go as well as other pedestrians. We work very closely with the school district on selecting these locations. And as some of the council alluded that and the mayor, that we always go from the closest and work our way out from the school. And this also goes along with our bike and ped plan, some of these locations. And the goal is to never damage any utilities. We're not going that far down in the ground when we do this. And there was lots of consideration, including our own arborists going out there and looking at the trees. In addition to the latest Bluestem area with Willow, our city engineer has not yet sent out a letter, but his intent was to have an open house with those residents and kind of have a sketchup plan. So it's not a surprise to me that maybe some of them did not know we that is on our agenda to get out this spring to meet up with them.
And also, one of my signatures on the petition is a member of the school board.
Thank you for your reference. Do we have other matters from the public? If not, we will go forth to item eight, which is an oath of office for probationary police officer Andrew Bloom. Want to tell us a little bit about Andrew?
Yeah, thank you, your mayor. Today, I'm honored to introduce Andrew Bloom for issuing the oath of office for a probationary police officer. Andrew Bloom is a certified law enforcement officer who joined our department on January 27th, 2025, after just six, after just over six years of law enforcement service with the Geneva Police Department. Prior to working for Geneva PD, Andrew worked as an officer for six years at the University of Illinois Chicago Police Department. As an officer, Andrew served in both patrol and investigative capacities. Andrew also served as an investigator on the Kane County Major Crimes Task Force, an opportunity reserved for only the most polished investigators. He's a graduate of Conant High School in Hoffman Estates and obtained a bachelor's degree in law enforcement and justice administration from Western Illinois University. Officer Bloom is currently assigned to the Field Training Division. We're excited to have Andrew join our police department. We believe his law enforcement background and prior experience will help make him an immediate asset to our department.
So Andrew, would you like to have your family come up here and join you? We got to, we got to put you here in the middle of the circle. Get you guys on TV here. All right. So if you raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Andrew Bloom.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of probationary police officer.
To the position of probationary police officer.
On January 27th, 2025.
On January 27th, 2025.
With the Batavia Police Department.
The Batavia Police Department.
And the city of Batavia.
And the city of Batavia.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Salam, I swear.
Salam, I swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of probationary police officer.
Of probationary police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations again. You're really on top. All right, moving to item nine, which is presentation of Fermilab's 2024 annual update by Britta McKenna, who is the Batavia representative on the Fermi Citizens Board, I guess.
Citizens Advisory Board, correct. Yes, I'm Britta McKenna. I've been serving on the board for nearly 10 years and it's my pleasure to bring you this year's year in review. And tonight will be Greg Stevens, who is the Deputy Director for Operations and Chief Operating Officer at Fermilab. Greg.
All right. Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council and the public. It's good to be here. So as as Britta said, I'm Greg Stevens. I'm the chief operating officer at Fermilab. I joined the lab on May 6th, 2024, and we were in the middle of going through a contract transition and a rebid process, which is always a joy. If you've never done that, I highly recommend it. It'll, it'll change your life. So we'll take a peek here at the year in review. So fiscal year 24 by the numbers, much of this you probably know, but we'll, we'll make sure we cover it. The lab currently has over 2,000 employees. The count as of yesterday was about 2,167, in case anyone was counting. There are about 5,300 site visitor requests processed in the last year. Had more than 6,000 visitors that came to the Lederman Science Center during the year and had over 17,000 students that were reached through the programs at the laboratory, STEM and other outreach programs. And of course, Mr. Freese, I haven't had the opportunity to meet him yet, but I've done some of the things Mr. Freese does and I can tell you that's, it's a hoot. It's a good job and we appreciate everything he does for outreach for the lab. 212 undergraduate and graduate interns processed through the laboratory in 2024, working to support the laboratory and our missions as well as their studies. Today, we have about 80, 85 post docs at the lab, slightly higher than the numbers at the end of 2024. And 640 individuals participated in the teacher education programs, including Corknet at the laboratory, one of the programs that's offered by the lab. LB&amp;F Dune, which is the largest single project in the Department of Energy Office of Science portfolio, a project that is just over $5 billion in total value. The the progress that was made in 2024 is pretty remarkable. Completed excavation of the caverns in South Dakota. Those caverns are at minus 4850 level within the old Homestake Mine in Lead, South Dakota. It's a long way down and a longer way back up. At some point, if you haven't seen the videos and the information on the caverns, it's pretty impressive. It's a city unto itself underground and we're going to fill the cavern that you see there in the upper right hand corner with two very large targets. Just to give you an idea of the scale, if you're not familiar with it, the cavern is about three football fields long and about two and a half to three football fields wide and it's nine stories tall. And the cavern will be jam packed with argon filled specialized detectors that will go in there, 90,000 tons of liquid argon in each detector. And if you're doing that math in your head, that's a lot of argon. So we had a, the cavern excavation was completed and had a ribbon cutting event there back in August. Did a successful test for lowering the steel beams. So a detector that size, I think of a ginormous, I heard that term earlier and I like it myself, so we'll reuse it, a ginormous erector set. The detectors are built piece by piece above ground in various locations. They're shipped to Lead and then they're effectively in pieces. So you have this, this giant erector set that we lower down through the conveyance down to the minus 4850 level. And it's kind of a work of art because some of the pieces and the beams are so large that they barely fit in the conveyance itself and you have to kind of put them in at an angle, take them down into the cavern, move them into the cavern space and then reassemble them into the detector frame itself and put the detector parts in the middle. We've successfully tested being able to do that and the geometry required to get them in the right orientation and get them into the mine. If you've ever moved a sofa into your house, think of a really big, really long, really heavy sofa and you're going to take it upstairs. That's kind of what we're doing down in the mine. The near detector prototype, which is a two by two version, much smaller version of the detectors, saw its first accelerator neutrons toward the end of fiscal year 24, calendar year 24, actually. And the proto Dune at CERN, which is a sister experiment in Switzerland, was filled with liquid argon during the year. Jim Kirby, in his dashing self there shown in the lower center of the photo, he is the new long baseline neutrino facility, Dune Project Director. He joined our team about the middle of last year and is on top of the project today. In fact, he's on a plane right now headed back to Lead, South Dakota tonight. He loves it there. 2024 highlights, the PIP-2 accelerator project continues to move along. That is the next generation accelerator for the laboratory. Up in the right hand corner is Pantaleo Ramandi, who is the current project director of the PIP-2 project. The cold box, which was the in-kind contribution, a major contribution from India, arrived on site in late, mid to late December and was actually moved from that location into its final resting place in the facility at the laboratory. I don't know if any of you followed the trip, but the contribution was from India. It was actually, the cold box was produced and built in France. It came over on a ship headed to the south mouth of the Mississippi, came up the Mississippi and then offloaded in Illinois and made a very slow and torturous trek from the Mississippi over to the Batavia site. It sat idle through winter break and then moved it on into position into the year 1st of January. Completed the early conventional facility sub project, the PIP-2 project is broken into several sub projects so that we can parallel some of the activities up. The photo in the center there depicts just about where we are today. Just this afternoon, I was providing an overview for one of the undersecretaries from DOE and looking out the window. You can imagine the frame that is shown there now has, it's beginning to get steel decking on the top roof of that, that main accelerator building, which is the one that is just a skeleton in this photo. Construction continues and it is on track for the current schedule for PIP-2. For those of you who don't know, PIP-2 is the proton improvement project two accelerator. Looking toward the future, what we have in place for use of beam, which is produced by the accelerator with the new super whamadine accelerator, I'm not a physicist, I'm an engineer by training, so I use highly technical terms like super whamadine. We'll only be using about 10% of the beam available from that new accelerator to, to run the Dune experiment. So that means we have a lot of bandwidth to be able to do other experiments for other customers as time progresses. In astrophysics, the dark energy survey released new results and the dark energy spectroscopic instrument released its first results. And then the, the first results were from using skipper CCD technology from for cosmology. Most of these technologies and equipment are actually produced at the laboratory at Fermilab, some remarkable capabilities and, and manufacturing facilities. Also, the SBND was filled with liquid argon and saw its first neutrino interactions. That's the short baseline neutrino system. The, the upper right hand photograph where you have people clapping pretty raucously in the background, it's, it's good to see physicists celebrate when they've done a lot of work over a number of years, but that was taken right after the first neutrino interactions were detected. And a lot of people put a lot of hours into making sure that that experiment went well. The SQMS, the superconducting quantum materials services location at the laboratory partnered with IBM and we're continuing to work that relationship with IBM and a couple of other outside industrial partners, including Xlight and some others. We opened the Quiet Lab, which is the partner to Loud, and I wish I could tell you exactly what those acronyms mean, but I haven't memorized all of them yet. I'm an operations guy, not a physicist. So that Quiet Lab was opened up and you can see in the middle picture, our previous lab director, Leah Mermenga, and several other dignitaries, cutting the ribbon on the Quiet Lab during 2024. That will enable us to do some local experiments. That's at about the minus 90 foot level there on laboratory property at Fermilab, using some quantum sensors and other technologies that will be used in the future experimentation, both at LB&amp;F Dune and on other projects. The Integrated Engineering Research Center, with its environmentally sustainable design, received multiple awards, Lead Green and so forth. And we'll, we'll let you know, if you haven't already read about it, we will be changing the name and overriding the name of the Integrated Engineering Research Center. It will be the Helen Edwards Engineering Research Center. That's officially passed through all of its government channels and in the April timeframe, we'll be sponsoring an event to recognize that name change and we'll make sure that the local communities are aware of that. Started construction on the new welcome center at Pine and Kirk. On that location, you can see that in the bottom right hand corner, that construction continues. Some of you are probably aware, we had to do some water main work at the intersection that got a little sticky there toward the end of the year, but we managed to go for our way through that and got all that straightened out. So now it is, in construction terms, we're at the blow and go section. We are absolutely doing bulks work, building framework and getting the building ready for December 2025 mass construction complete date. So we have about 11 months of that left and then we'll be commissioning that facility afterwards. It's going to be a shiny new welcome center. There'll be a new entry control facility and some other improvements at that entry as well as we're working on making some improvements on the Batavia Road entry facility as well. And continuing to advance emerging technologies beyond physics. That's not intended to hurt the feelings of anyone who's in physics, but great tools are great and great experiments are great, but applying them to real world problems is even better. So we'll be moving out on that as we move into 2025 and beyond. The new MNO contractor, Fermi Forward Discovery Group, that's us. It is a partnership primarily led by University of Chicago and University's Research Association. Those names should be familiar. They were the partners on the previous Fermi Research Alliance LLC partnership that was the MNO contractor for the lab. They added integrated subcontractors, Amintum and Longenecker and Associates. Those two industrial partners have deep and broad roots in the Department of Energy complex as well as in other businesses. I know that well because I've worked with Longenecker for more than two decades and I actually came from Amintum, where I spent the last 38, 39 years in various forms and various assignments throughout that company. So it's good to be here. I feel welcomed and I appreciate that. As you see in the, the bottom right of this or the second, the right half of this slide, part of what Fermi Forward is bringing is some new science initiatives in neutrino science in the Higgs boson area, in new experiments in muon science, continuing to explore the dark universe and continuing to build our dominance in accelerators through PIP-2 and other activities. We intend to be more engaged than we are today, which is quite a climb, more engaged with our users and stakeholders, including the surrounding communities, continuing to build out our core capabilities and continuing to move the mission forward. Our new interim lab director is Dr. Youngke Kim. She could not be with us tonight, so you got the second fiddle player, that's me. Youngke joined us just a few weeks ago and unfortunately, she is in Switzerland tonight at CERN, which is one of our sister labs. And then she's going to make a quick dash off to Paris to make a presentation tomorrow and then she'll be back in her chair Wednesday afternoon. So I don't envy her or her travel schedule. I'll, I'll just stay here and run the lab. We'll take care of that. She's a member of the National Academy of Sciences. She's a member of the National Academy of Sciences, American Academy of Arts and Science. She's a fellow of the American Physical Society and the American Association for the Advancement of Science and the Sloan Foundation. She's the recipient of the Hoam Prize, which is part of the Korean-American consortium that recognizes excellence in the field. Her resume is longer than I am tall. She lacks almost nothing when it comes to excellence in background and capability. Extremely bright, extremely forward-looking, energetic like no other. We're typically exchanging texts late at night and she doesn't sleep a lot. So texts start about four-thirty in the morning and they continue until about eleven o'clock at night. So if you want to meet someone who has a lot of energy and is really interested in advancing the mission of the lab, like the rest of the team is committed to do, I'm certain that Youngke will be here to say hello at some point in the not-too-distant future, if she's afforded that opportunity. That is it for me. I'm happy to take any questions if there are any. Otherwise, I will try to not stay in between you and the end of your meeting. Thanks for having me.
Any Fermilab questions for the gentleman?
I have one, my perennial question, how do I get a grant or some way to get in and go fishing? They took that away from us a while ago. I don't know if that's ever going to come back.
I am not going to be the bearer of good news. The ability to go fishing or hunting on the laboratory property is unfortunately a thing of the past. Whether I wish it was different or not, doesn't matter. We have new directives and new expectations from those who provide us the funding to operate the lab, so we'll follow those.
Gordon Vogel, sir?
Related to seeking out hobbies that you can participate in that are not physics-related is cycling available again in Fermilab?
Cycling is available on the roadways, follow the Illinois state rules of the road. Several of the bike paths are suspended or currently not available, but you're welcome to ride on the roads. I don't recommend it today or tomorrow and I didn't recommend it two weeks ago when it was minus nine, although I will tell you that at night, when I was going home, it was about eight PM and it was well below zero and there was an individual riding their bicycle on the road. They're way tougher than I ever thought of being, but the roads are open. Show your real ID at the gate, just like you would if you were in a car and you should not be denied entry.
Thank you.
Bicycle, please make sure you follow the rules of the road, reflectors, lights, where something people can see you, because it is really pitch dark there at night. Okay?
I just want to add with the cyclists, you have a lot of very avid cyclists that ride their bikes to work. My house is along the way to work and I see them, they wave to me and it's amazing. When it's super cold, I'm like...
They're pretty energetic. I spent a fair amount of my life going back and forth to Los Alamos, one of the weapons labs, and I would see people riding up Mesa Road, up the front side of the mesa and I could go about eight feet sideways on that road and people ride their bikes to work there. So we are very careful and it's one of our safety reminders that we issue pretty often, just always be looking out for other motorists and cyclists and pedestrians. They deserve the right of way as well. Okay?
Certainly, on behalf of the city council, I want to thank you for coming in and introducing yourselves to us and I think you're a great continuation of the good things we've had from Fermilab for a long time. So I'm glad to see that they realize they need a friendly face and a knowledgeable face that can be out here and meeting us and understanding us and answering the questions that sometimes pop up about what's really happening there. So we've had an outstanding relationship with Fermilab since the days it was first created and I see no change in that and hopefully it gets better as time goes on, if it can get any better. It's about as good as it can get. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Have a great evening.
All right, moving to item ten, we're going to have a presentation about the Batavia United Way from Kathy Evangelista, who is their new executive director. And I want to just share this with the council. I met with her several weeks ago and her organization is doing so many good things in Batavia, specifically in support of people who need support and other grand ideas, that I suggested to her that, similar to what we have going with the Batavia Chamber of Commerce and the Batavia Main Street, which they take turns every other meeting coming, that I suggested to Kathy that maybe she could stop by four times a year in every season of the year and maybe take a few minutes at each meeting and tell us what Batavia United Way is up to, because they're really doing some nice things in this town and the council needs to be aware of them. I had the opportunity in December to see their giveaway for food for the Christmas program down at the VFW. It was a fantastic night and the production and the service and the volume of food that was distributed to needy Batavia families was really heartwarming to see. So I just want to say, we've got a good thing going here with Batavia United Way and we've got a dynamic director and I just want the city council to know a little bit more about her. So Kathy, you want to go ahead?
Thank you so much for those wonderful words. I'm Kathy Evangelista, I'm the executive director of Batavia United Way. Not so new anymore, it's my third year going. But for those of you who don't know, Batavia United Way has been serving Batavia residents since the late nineteen-twenty's. So it's been about ninety-five years that we've been here in Batavia, looking to build a more resilient community, expand youth opportunities, build a healthier community and increase financial stability within our Batavia residents. So I just want to share a couple of different things that we have had going on. As Mayor mentioned, over the holiday season, we had our Holiday Adopt a Family Program, which we partner with Batavia Public Schools every year to serve the students throughout Batavia who need a little bit of extra support. This year, we served one hundred and sixty-eight families, which covered three hundred and sixty-four students. And that was so many different organizations, individuals, book clubs, scout troops that ended up shopping for these families. And we cover more than just food and we cover, we make sure that those who are supporting our students are purchasing things like coats and gloves, winter hats and winter clothing and some personal care items like deodorant and toothbrushes and toothpaste and grocery gift cards and just a lot of really, really wonderful things. And there are so many different organizations that really come together with us to support our Batavia students. So it was a really wonderful, very heartwarming program. It is what makes the holiday season for me. And if you get a chance next year, I invite you to come and take a little peek at what we have going on there, because it's really something special. It says a lot about our community and how giving our community is. So that was in December and we have a couple of different things going on right now. We have our Snow Angels Volunteer Snow Shoveling Program. This is our second year and so we now have, people sign up to be snow angels, they volunteer their time to basically adopt a driveway of a senior veteran or a person with physical limitations that can't safely clear their snow or can't afford to do so. So people sign up and we have, right now, we're very, very lucky, again, Batavia's awesome, because we have more volunteers than we do have need of it. But then again, we also haven't had much snow. So right now, that program is going, that's for the entire snow season. So if somebody signs up to be a snow angel, they agree to adopt that driveway for the full snow season, December through March. So that's going on and wonderful program. We also have, are currently collecting handmade Valentine's Day cards for our isolated seniors. So we are doing a collection for handmade Valentine's Day cards that are signed so that we can distribute those to people living at River Rain or in other senior living communities. And the drop-off is at the chambers offices up until February tenth, we're collecting those. So I know a lot of scout troops do that and we've had different companies that have a teamwork building thing that donate that as well. Let me see here, we have a couple, two more things and then I'll leave you to it. So what else we have? Oh, we just launched today our Super Bowl of Caring, S-O-U-P, Super Bowl of Caring. So this week, we are partnering with Batavia Schools to collect soup, ready-to-eat cans of soup for the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry. The Super Bowl of Caring is a national event that happens every year and we've latched onto that. And so we have a friendly competition between the east side and the west side as to who can collect the most soup. So our schools are collecting soup in all of their libraries and the community can also participate. We have drop boxes at the school district offices, one for the east side and one for the west side, as well as you can, if the community wants to participate, they can just deliver their donations directly to the food pantry. They will weigh those donations and you just let them know if they should go to the east side or the west side. The west side. And then the fun thing that we're going to do with that is on Super Bowl Sunday, we will announce the winner on our social media pages. But really, who wins are the residents of Batavia that go to the food pantry. They're the ones who are going to get, you know, benefit from all the soup. And then our last thing, we have a thing for soup, I'm telling you. The last thing is we have our annual soup, Soups On fundraiser, our soup tasting, that's happening at Pal Joey's on March sixth. Again, it's a fundraiser, so we're raising money to support our initiatives and that is on Thursday, March sixth, from six to eight. And if you're interested in learning more about that or getting tickets, that's, you can visit our website, www.batavionitedway.org. Does anybody have any questions?
Question to Kathy. Well, thank you and keep up the great work. You really are making this organization spin. Gordon Piper?
I also wanted to mention, just a couple of months ago, Batavia United Way spoke with the Bike Commission on ways to help folks with, you know, transit and other mobility opportunities here in town as well. I'd throw that out there.
Next time I come, I'm going to talk more about that. I can only talk so much. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you for coming down for your first now annual or regular visit. Okay, we're moving to eleven, the Batavia Chamber. Margaret?
Evening, everyone. Nice to see you. Thank you for letting me speak to you this evening. I do have to say, Kathy does an amazing job. Good job, Kathy. I want to start out by reminding you to mark your calendars. I've said this the last two times I've been up here, but we really want you to join us at Inspire Celebration coming up. This is our great Batavia event where we celebrate our Citizen of the Year, Bob Hubbard, well-deserving. And Batavia Main Street is the recipient of the Spirit of Batavia Award and the Peace Bridge Initiative will also be celebrated. So mark your calendars and registration is available already on our website. It will be April twenty-fourth, Thursday, April twenty-fourth, at Revelry Six Seventy-Five. We also will soon be announcing our only award winners. That is, the only award is a special tribute to the businesses that have made significant investments and improvements in Batavia. So you'll definitely want to join us. I do want to say inspiring future leaders is something that is at the heart of what the Batavia Chamber does. We want to remind everyone that the Chamber Scholarship Application is open for Batavia High School students. We will be awarding a thousand dollars to four students. So it's a terrific way for us to be able to support the school district. Workforce development is a key area for the Batavia Chamber as well. I sit on the Board of the King County Workforce Development and we work, the Chamber works with the work that Batavia, we work with the Batavia Public School System, Tom Kim is on my board. Valleys is Valley Education for Employment System. They are an active member of our Chamber and we also work with Aurora Regional Pathways to Prosperity Initiative. So, and we also have a very active job board. So any way we can help in that area, the Chamber is all in. I want to extend a warm welcome to the businesses that joined the Chamber this month. Commiss Colorworks, DNA, Fox Valley Plumbing, Concrete Slab Techs, Everdeen's Grilled Cheese, and Beyond Physio. They're all now valued members of the Chamber, so go to the website to find out more information about these great businesses. Check the Chamber's website. We continue to work on providing the opportunity for businesses to develop their skills, gain visibility, market themselves, build relationships and lean on each other. We have many forums to help businesses connect with other businesses and find out tips and hacks and life hacks and ways to do their business better. We also have educational webinars and seminars in person to help business owners grow their businesses. And of course, we have celebratory ribbon-cutting ceremonies. Our Chamber not-for-profit forum is this Wednesday, February fifth, at eight AM. Kathy Evangelista is a regular attendee. I know that they have made, Batavia United Way has made many connections with other service organizations at that, that has really made a difference in our community. At four o'clock on Wednesday, February fifth, we have a ribbon-cutting celebrating reliable auto repair at fifteen fifteen Paramount Parkway. On Friday, February seventh, we have our Out to Lunch, so you could just drop in and have lunch with the Chamber. No registration required. It'll be at Windmill Grill at noon. On Wednesday, February twelfth, at eight AM, if you're interested in seeing Tourist Center for Integrated Hearing Healing on Flynn Street, they are hosting us for our coffee and commerce, so come and build relationships and get to know the other business owners in town. On Thursday, February thirteenth, we have a Women in Business Breakfast Luncheon, I mean Breakfast Networking Event. We've always previously done luncheon, so we're going to do a breakfast this time. That will be held at Lincoln Inn, so that'll be a fun event to join us. We try to make networking as fun as possible. Our ribbon-cutting is on February fourteenth at one o'clock for Sea Peak Style, two-twenty-two East Wilson. They were a former boardwalk shop, so we're happy to be able to celebrate them getting a new location. And our Great Winner Mixer is on Wednesday, February nineteenth, at four-thirty at Grainology. This is a tri-city networking event. We try to partner with our local chambers as often as possible to give our members more opportunities. And finally, we have an educational event at the Batavia Public Library on Thursday, February twentieth, at eight AM. This will help employees learn how to navigate neurodivergent employees and employers learn how to manage difficult, sensitive situations while reducing regulatory risks. So it's a lot to be said, but important information for employees, employers to know. Before I introduce my esteemed guest, does anybody have any questions for me tonight? Good, okay, great. I do want to introduce Lucy Martinez. She is the owner of Sixty-third Street Apothecary, who is at Ten East Wilson. We recently celebrated her ribbon-cutting. She has a wonderful retail business that she's going to tell you all about.
Thank you. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here. So yes, I have Sixty-third Street Apothecary. I'm at Ten East Wilson, like she said. Sixty-third Street actually is where I grew up in Chicago and it's where I got my first soap kit. And unfortunately, my mother and I burnt that soap. So I do make glycerin soaps. It's actually one of the first soaps that I started making, you know, because I had to get it right, right? And so I'm glad to say that I do have those up in shop. I have been a resident of Batavia for twenty-five years, actually over twenty-five years. My son went to HC Storm, Rotolo and BHS, he graduated. And in that timeframe, I got to really get to know the community and I was VP of Music Buffs and Stage, because he loved to perform. And so now it's nice to be on that other side of one thunder, using people come in and asking if they can, if I can donate. So it's nice to be on that other side, because let me tell you, it's not easy to ask for donations. But anyway, wanted to talk a little bit about my shop and I like to say that I cater to people with skin sensitivities. I offer different types of soaps. They're vegan-based for the most part. I do have goat milk soaps, but they're clearly labeled for people. And the products that I use, I use highly, high-quality organic ingredients to make everything. And it's all natural, small-batch made. You'll constantly see me making something in my shop. It'll be rare the moment that you come in and I'm not making something. It'll be rare the moment that you come in and I'm not making something. You will smell candles, you'll smell soaps, you'll smell lotions. I did bring some samples for all of you, and hopefully you'll enjoy those. I make many products with essential oils and fragrance oils, so, and I also have quite a bit of unscented, unscented lotions, soaps, creams, body wash. So, if you let me know, if you come into my shop and let me know, hey, I've got eczema, I've got, you know, rosacea, my kid really suffers, I use clays and beautiful oils and butters that will kind of help calm it. I wish I could say it'll clear it away, but it doesn't, but at least it will calm it. So, I have two different types of bars that I make, the glycerin and cold process. I have three types of hand soaps, liquid soaps, a beautiful Castile soap that I, like I said, I make them in the shop, and very gentle on the skin. You can use it as a hand soap or a body wash. I do have a couple elderly people that do come in and buy it specifically, unscented, but it's the gentlest form of soap that you can get, and they love it. I have lotions. I have a body lotion that's made with argan oil, squalene, roseup seed oil, jojoba, grape seed oil, and those oils are just so lovely on the skin. Some of them are similar to our pH balance, so they get absorbed really nicely, and you won't feel like a greasiness when you use it. And you're going to notice when you do use the samples that a little bit goes a long way, because they are so natural. The, I have sugar scrubs, I have candles. The candles that I make are with organic soy, coconut, and beeswax. And then, I have a higher-quality soy blend that I use, and I actually just created a candle bar. You can come in, make an appointment with me, come in, and I'll show you how to make a candle. I'll even help you combine fragrances, and you'll personalize it to the way that you like it. And then, the other thing is I will be having, like, herbal teas and salves that I also make. I've only been in this shop a few months, and I opened right before the holidays. So, it's been go, 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 and trying to keep everything on, you know, the products on my shelves. But like I said, I'm constantly making something, and if you see that you want something, but it's not on my shelf, talk to me, let me know. Because I do have most of the ingredients inside the shop, a lot of the times, I'm able to tell you, come back in the weekend, and you'll have it. So, it's really nice to be able to cater the community, right, to help the community. So, any questions?
Any questions? Well, we thank you for coming in and talking to us and explaining to the council what you're doing. I've had several people ask me about that, so I'm pleased that you're here to publicly talk about it, and wish you the very best. I think you've got an interesting product for a lot of specifically more seniors, citizens in town are interested in what you're doing there. So, I appreciate your
Thank you.
... your audience that you're now attracting into downtown Batavia.
Yeah. Honestly, if you have a skin issue, let me know, or a skin, fragrance sensitivity, let me know, and I will help you throughout the store. Okay? Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, moving then to item number 12, which is Resolution 2025-012-R, Approval of Master Agreement for Professional Services with the Brattle Group. Who's got this one? Alden?
Your Honor. Thank you. This would be a master service agreement that we have with the Brattle Group for professional services, mainly relating to our electric utility. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that. I'll make the motion then that we approve the Resolution 2025-12-R, Approval of Master Agreement for Professional Services with the Brattle Group Incorporated.
Second. One second. Ms. Russo, did you have a question?
I do have a comment.
Would you come up and do it, please?
Tonight, I am addressing the need to recognize the role of the public in Batavia's public utility. In its letter of January 22nd, the Brattle Group defined the proposed scope of work for Batavia's Integrated Resource Plan Study. On page 3 of that letter, the Brattle Group proposes that it will make presentations to city council and other stakeholders on, quote, "an as-needed basis per the instructions of city staff to explain the key findings from the utility studies." Once again, Batavia's electric utility is a public utility. As a public utility, it is the obligation of this city council, the city staff, and the Brattle Group to involve the public, Batavia's taxpayers and ratepayers in the decisions being made by this Integrated Resource Plan Study. Both Mr. Home and the Brattle Group made reference to proposed state legislation as partial motivation for this study. I have been personally involved with and contributed to the language in this legislation. While the language is not yet finalized, the proposed legislation has a clearly-defined stakeholder process for integrated resource plan studies. As it currently reads, this legislation has five requirements. One, at least two stakeholder meetings open to all ratepayers and members of the public must be held. Two, the public utility must give notice of the meetings to all customers not less than 30 days prior to the meetings. Three, the meetings shall describe the processes used for developing the Integrated Resource Plan, the core assumptions and constraints, the proposed preferred portfolio, and a description of any planned retirements and capital expenditures on existing generation resources. Four, each meeting shall allow time for public comment, and attendees shall be provided with the opportunity to submit public comments and writing following the meeting. Five, and most importantly, the public utility must review public comments and provide responses that reasonably address all issues or questions raised by such comments. This is the type of stakeholder involvement that will put the public into Batavia's public utility. This is the type of stakeholder involvement that taxpayers and ratepayers deserve as the parties who will bear the financial, social, and environmental costs of the decisions made by the Integrated Resource Plan Study. I urge city council and city staff to require the Brattle Group to provide Batavia taxpayers and ratepayers with stakeholder opportunities that provide meaningful input into the Integrated Resource Plan. Will Batavia stakeholders participate in such an opportunity? Just two weeks ago, 100 people attended a public forum in St. Charles to learn about the St. Charles City Council's decision whether to continue buying electricity from the coal-heavy IMEA. There is little doubt that stakeholder meetings about Batavia's reliance on electricity generated by Prairie State will produce great interest and attendance. Thank you for your time.
Alden Beck?
If such stakeholder or public engagement items are not explicitly listed in this master services agreement, is there a way we can work that in?
We could, but you know, what's great about us being our own public utility and that all of you sitting around this dais are the ones who dictate on a project such as this, what the requirements are. Any one of those things that Ms. Russo brought up, we could integrate into this process, and we don't even need to make it, you know, a part of the formal agreement. But as Garry noted, it is anticipated that if we were going to have the public meeting with the draft of the recommendations that were part of the resource plan, and of course, it would have all the public participation that all of our meetings do, the opportunity to hear any and all comments from the public, and we'd be happy to respond to, you know, any of the issues and concerns that were raised as part of any of that. Nothing of those five requirements sounded unreasonable at all, including, you know, ordinarily, our meetings, you know, there's perhaps not as much as 30 days' public notice, but with something, a document like this, that I'm anticipating would take a while for people to read and to digest and formulate their comments and concerns and questions. We certainly could make a public announcement of that 30 days ahead of time also. So, none of that sounds unreasonable, and I, you know, if you would like us to integrate that as part of the process, we'd be happy to.
And I think that that's one thing that we looked at in the past, that we wanted to stay ahead of this, especially the legislation and what's going to come out, because we're going to have to comply with that regardless of what anybody thinks. I think it's good for the city to start this out now, ahead of that legislation, because I think it's also important that we do start to think about how we're going to plan for whatever changes come, for future city councils to be able to understand that, you know, maybe we didn't have all the information in front of us when we made the decisions on Prairie State. We really feel like, or at least I want to make sure, being one person that's left from that timeframe, that all of that gets said and all of that is out there. I would like at least 30 days' notice to make sure that the public is aware that you want to say something, you want to be part of this, because we do want to hear that upfront. We don't want to wait until afterwards and say, why didn't you listen? Well, we want to make sure that we get to hear that upfront, and I'm going to guarantee you that Susan will be here and bring as many people as she can to come and talk to us about this. And I think it's good. I think that it is good that it gets out there in front of the public, and that they are participating in it, and they do understand the realities. You know, I thought about this when I was explaining this to somebody a month or two ago. What happens if the plant gets hit, blows up, and can't operate? What do we do? What's our backup plan for that? You know, or it gets shut down by federal mandate? I don't know. What are we going to do, and where are we going to go about that? I think if we have this study done, and, you know, we have somewhat of a plan of what we'd like to have as a portfolio, not what we have that we're stuck with, then we can go out and figure out where we could get that. You know, I'm sure that Steve will shudder over there when I say things just shut off, and we don't know where we get the power from. It's out there, it's just a matter of who do we go to and how do we pay for it? So, I think it's really important that, you know, we stay open-minded in this going forward and try to do the things that we think are right for our city until the state forces us to do something different. Because I think that's the thing that, again, we have to remember, we are a public utility. Everybody sitting up here pays the same rates that the rest of the public does, and we wouldn't, you know, like to be able to have options. And I think that's the biggest thing to me, is to make sure that we have information on all those options, very public about what those options are, and, you know, allow people to come in and talk to us about that before we make a decision.
As just a point of clarification, I think what it's important is that stakeholders have input into the process that reaches the conclusions that are going to result in this Integrated Resource Plan. Having the Brattle Group through going through all of its studies and all of its meetings with staff, and then presenting a finished product, which the public can then comment on, is not public input. That is not public input, because the decision has already basically been made. We need a process by which the public is invited to tell the Brattle Group, and you, and staff, what we believe should be the priorities that are met in this process and in this study. That's what I'm looking for, not the ability to come to you after the fact and say, ooh, I love this, or I hate it. You know, it's no good to me at that point in time. It's done. But we need a process to be involved. We're the public. This is our utility. This is our money that is being paid, that is paying for this utility. And we, the people, should have a say in this process and in these decisions. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, you know, fully echo everything you're saying, and I did quite a bit of this work in my time in Colorado, be doing public input on public works projects, ensuring that it was sort of front-end. First off, just echo what's being said, all the research shows, if the public's involved on the front end, the outcomes are better on the back end, right? So, we kind of know that to be true. The other thing I know, though, is that running those types of public comment sessions aren't cheap. You know, it does take staff hours. Do we know, is that type of work here in the proposal before us? Like, do we know? I'm not framing my question well, but, you know, they're going to have staff hours, and they're going to bill us for it. Can we absorb that type of billing for that type of work?
I anticipate that the very start of this process is going to be some type of kickoff meeting that will be with all of you in a public meeting with the opportunity for the public to be involved in that part of the process as well, and to provide any insights that they may want the consulting group to take into consideration as they go into the process of, you know, they've asked for a mountain of data from us, from which to work on each separate part of this plan, but I do anticipate that we're going to have a kickoff meeting with them.
Yeah, and I would be very surprised if they hadn't, if the Brattle Group hadn't thought of that. I mean, this is standard practice for a lot of these types of jobs. Now, whether it's two stakeholder meetings or whatever the legislation may say, but they certainly should have some experience in this, I would suspect. So, great.
Comments or questions? Can we have a motion? Alden Piper?
I might also suggest that a stakeholder meeting for the cost of service and rate design would, might also be helpful, just to get an idea of what sort of rate schemes might be useful for folks, including possibly time-demand pricing and stuff like that, for people who might want to, say, charge a battery system overnight or that kind of thing, just to know, like, what opportunities are out there here in part of the community and what we're going with.
Can we have a motion and second? Kirk, call the roll.
Solf.
I have one quick question. So, do we need to take any action then for tonight with what Susan's request? Like, it's already baked into the proposal that we should be able to absorb those hours, but I definitely would like
That's just direction to staff about what elements to include. So, we've received the direction, and we'll make sure that we follow the instructions provided. Solf?
Aye.
Solf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
12 yes, no-no, two absent.
Approved. Moving to item 13, which is Resolution 2025-013R, Approval of Task Force Order Number One with the Brattle Group for Integrated Resource Planning, Infrastructure Resiliency, Cost of Service, and Rate Design for the One with the Brattle Group for Integrated Resource Planning, Infrastructure Resiliency, Cost of Service, and Rate Design for the Electric Utility.
Thank you. This would be for the first task order in getting into that, the study for resource planning, resiliency, cost of service, and rate design for our utility. Again, I think this is something that's very important, whether or not we're forced to do anything by the state. We have a plant that we have a contract with, so it won't apply immediately, but parts of this study, we also need to know for where we think our utility is going with demand, with, you know, what type of things we're going to need to do on our infrastructure, which I think is just as big a question as where we're going to purchase power from with the age of most of the infrastructure in the city. So it is something that is important, and I think we do have to, you know, we don't want to just kick this can down the road and let somebody else figure it out. We need to start this now, and we need to, I think, continually think about this going in the future. And that was one of the things, as I read through a lot of the stuff that's been worked on at the state level, is some of the lack of planning by some of the for-profit companies, and then they just expect to come in and ask for a rate increase to take care of all the problems that they have kicked down the road for so long. So I think it's important that we take that first step, start this now, and then be able to comply with anything that comes in the future.
Any comments?
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2025-13R, Approval of Task Order Number One with the Brattle Group for Integrated Resource Planning, Infrastructure Resiliency, Cost of Service, and Rate Design for the Electric Utility.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
No.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Eleven yes, one no, two absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to fourteen, Resolution 2025-019-R, Approval of Budget Amendment to Facilitate Performance of Integrated Resource Planning as Well as Infrastructure Resiliency, Cost of Service, and Rate Design Studies for the Batavia Electric Utility.
This is how we pay for it. Originally, staff had decided to do this, but probably not at the scope at which they ended at, because when you look at it and you decide, okay, do I want to do the study and only do a part of it, or do I want to do this and do all of it? So we have the big picture and not just part of the picture. So I think it is important that, you know, the city step up and do this at this time. It's not going to get any easier or any cheaper later on, and who knows what the state will actually approve, that may end up costing us more. If they decide to have it done on a regular basis, that doesn't fit our particular utility's size. The money would come out of our reserves in the electric utility. This is money that's being spent out of the enterprise fund in the electric utility, not out of the general fund. Still, all, you know, money that's been paid in by ratepayers, so it is part of the utility. At this point, we don't anticipate raising rates to do this, but that may be a discussion for later. Anybody have any questions? Now, I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2025-19R, Approval of Budget Amendment to Facilitate Performance of the Integrated Resource Planning as Well as Infrastructure Resiliency, Cost of Service, and Rate Design Studies for our Electric Utility.
Move by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Beck, for Approval of Resolution 2025-019-R. Any further discussion? Alderman Lehman?
I'm voting in favor of this, because I think it's important for the future of Batavia and our electric utility, but I will just publicly say I'm getting nervous about how often we keep dipping into reserves, both that budget season and now with this, and just put it on our minds that we need to address that next year, so.
For the comment? Anybody else? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
No.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Eleven yes, one no, two absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to fourteen, Resolution 2025-019-R, Approval of Budget Amendment to Facilitate Performance of the Integrated Resource Planning as Well as Infrastructure Resiliency, Cost of Service, and Rate Design Studies for the Batavia Electric Utility.
This is how we pay for it. Originally, staff had decided to do this, but probably not at the scope at which they ended at, because when you look at it and you decide, okay, do I want to do the study and only do a part of it, or do I want to do this and do all of it? So we have the big picture and not just part of the picture. So I think it is important that, you know, the city step up and do this at this time. It's not going to get any easier or any cheaper later on, and who knows what the state will actually approve, that may end up costing us more. If they decide to have it done on a regular basis, that doesn't fit our particular utility's size. The money would come out of our reserves in the electric utility. This is money that's being spent out of the enterprise fund in the electric utility, not out of the general fund. Still, all, you know, money that's been paid in by ratepayers, so it is part of the utility. At this point, we don't anticipate raising rates to do this, but that may be a discussion for later. Anybody have any questions? Now, I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2025-19R, Approval of Budget Amendment to Facilitate Performance of the Integrated Resource Planning as Well as Infrastructure Resiliency, Cost of Service, and Rate Design Studies for our Electric Utility.
Move by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Beck, for Approval of Resolution 2025-019-R. Any further discussion? Alderman Lehman?
I'm voting in favor of this, because I think it's important for the future of Batavia and our electric utility, but I will just publicly say I'm getting nervous about how often we keep dipping into reserves, both that budget season and now with this, and just put it on our minds that we need to address that next year, so.
For the comment? Anybody else? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
No.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Eleven yes, one no, two absent.
Resolution 2025-019-R is approved. Moving to fifteen, Administrator's Report.
Good evening, and I just have a few things that I wanted to bring up. We recently approved some, I'd call them major revisions, but really mostly to the organization of our liquor code, as opposed to the substance of our liquor code. And again, you know, kudos to Max, who did the yeoman's job of marching through that very hefty ordinance piece by piece, and I think he made a lot of improvements to it that make it much easier to understand from the point of somebody who has liquor sales as part of their business to be able to navigate that piece of legislation and understand exactly where their business fits, but even if they are still confused after that, administration has taken over the management of the process for liquor licenses, and so both Karen Morley and Max and I are there to assist anybody who has questions about that. The next step in the process is that we're heading into the renewal for our current liquor license holders. Max is putting together a letter to all of the current liquor license holders, letting them know about the changes that were made to the ordinance, introducing them to our new online process for liquor license renewals, which we hope will streamline the process both for the applicants as well as on our side as well. So hopefully, we'll see a lot of process improvements with that. The other thing was that finance has, you know, been very busy with all of the typical things that they do at year-end and the audit process. However, another thing that they have been busy doing is taking a look at the potential effects of the loss of federal funding. You know, last week at the Committee of the Hall, we discussed, and it was that, the evening before, when we had received the notice that there was going to be potential interruptions in federal funding sources, whether they, you know, specifically in the grants that we were receiving. The city of Batavia, we receive about $26.7 million as the amount that would be affected in this year's budget. So even though there has been a stay on the, and the Office of Management of Budget memo was rescinded, I still think it is wise for us to be cognizant of the effect that any interruptions in federal funding might have. So the finance department has been busy analyzing that and the impacts, and then we'll also have to come up with what would be our alternative in the events that that funding wasn't available for the projects for which we had identified that. And then also, just letting people know, as part of the strategic plan, we had in there that this year we were going to purchase bike and pedestrian counting equipment, and this is really going to help us with making data-informed decisions about where we put new bike and pedestrian infrastructure, but also it helps us when we are asking for funding from other sources to demonstrate where there's a need in our community and be able to back that up with real numbers. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me. Yes, Alderman Behrens?
I have a question regarding the permit for the liquor license. Is that going to be all online, or will people also have an option to be able to do it the old-fashioned way, as I would say?
You know, we realize that up to this point, we have had several, you know, the option, whether to do it on paper or online, for several of the different permits. We'd like to go to a 100% online process, but this being the first year, we're trying to meet people where they're at. One of the things that we might do, because these are local businesses, and we like the one-on-one approach to things, so maybe one of us will just head over there with a laptop and show people how easy that is to do. But I think the reality of the situation today is that there are many processes from a business owner's perspective that can only be done online, and so I think we're transitioning to, you know, that place where, again, the business processes are going to be 100% online very soon.
I think a good metrics coming from this is to, you know, the licenses that renew, how is it done? Is it, do they take it from the letter and do it themselves? Are they, we have to handhold them, or are they, we have to take the computer over? And then that way, you can see, like, where maybe some of their challenges were and what you can provide for training for the next year, and then again, kind of go through the same process of tracking that to kind of show that improvement from that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would just say, I say here, when you started that, it took me about thirty seconds to get to new liquor license, the form and everything right there on the tablet, so it didn't take very long to find it.
Yeah, and if I may, one of the things is that we're trying to do some user testing before we launch it, so test it with a few businesses. Myself, Karen, Laura have been filing fake liquor applications all week, testing out the system. We have some pretty cool business names that we've got. But yeah, to your point, I mean, I will sit with businesses and do it with them. I think that that's the intent, is rather than trying to recreate a paper application, let's keep it in the system, let's have it tracked there. There's payment built into the system, so we're really excited about what it looks like. Yeah.
I think it just kind of shows the progress from that and the benefit that it provides, and, you know, and it helps you, especially when you work with them one-on-one. It lets you know where the struggles are and what you need to do for their training so the next year, you can be like, hey, here's some frequently asked questions, and here's how you guide your way through it.
Thank you.
Questions on that one? You done?
Yes.
Very good. Do we have other business tonight from the council? Alderman Lehman?
I just want to recognize that February is Black History Month, and we have much to remember and celebrate in our town, both currently and historically, and I just wanted to remember that, so.
Okay, thank you. Under the mayor's report, I'm going to be very quick. I just want to share some of the stuff we've already talked about. The Batavia Police Department, let me just say this, is doing a phenomenally good job in testing all these people with all their kind of licenses. Do they do? Are we testing for age of people buying whatever? Are we testing to see, you're checking for IDs on liquor sales? And we send in a minor, and we send in an officer, probably in civilian clothes with a camera on, and we tape it right then and there, and when they don't do it the right way, me, myself, and I, as the liquor commissioner, I hit them with a pretty good fine. And as you may know, we've been doing this quite a bit, but this year, we seem to have had quite a few opportunities to fine people because of their stupidity. And as you know, we take some of that money from the fine, and we put it in a special fund that Peggy keeps, and one of the things we pay for is the post-prom party at Batavia